I'd like to call the April 17th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Very short meeting tonight, but short but impactful, as you'll see later. We're going to have some liaison reports and public comment. Bob's report. We're going to give a proclamation for public safety telecommunications week and we're going to hear some really compelling and great stories from our public safety group. We're going to have a hearing. Actually, is it a continuation of the hearing or no? A hearing for 467 Main Street and then change of a DBA corporate structure for the Art Lounge. I think we've already done minutes.
Yep.
March 27th?
Um, yeah, I think those were all...
Oh, we had three sets last time.
Well, we'll figure that out. So, just getting started, liaison reports. John, I'll start.
First, I think all the public safety people ought to sit down and relax. You can sit down, but don't relax.
Never, never.
The, yeah, it's a calm crowd tonight, so you guys can sit and relax.
Just be ready.
I actually don't have an official liaison report, but I do have, you know, I have an update on the greatest parade ever that's coming on April 29th. Matter of fact, a lot of the people in this room are going to be helping us with that parade. Little League softball and Little League baseball are teaming up to bring 700 kids into a parade. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. We've had a lot of help from people in this room, putting together the pipes and drums, putting together an honor guard. Chief Burns tells me the fire engine's going to be locked and loaded, ready to go, and making lots of noise in the front. And the chief tells, the other chief tells me there'll be one, there'll be a cruiser in the back letting everybody know it's over, so I think it's going to be a lot of fun. And I would just suggest to everybody, you know, a lot of the people here in this room will be there, but a lot of people that might be watching, it's Sunday morning, the 29th. We did have just a small crisis. We had to rearrange the time a little bit to 10:30 to make sure that everybody could get in and out of the parking lots at the right time, so it's going to be a lot of fun. Shriners, clowns, the high school band is going to be joining us as well as the other ones that I mentioned, so, and there'll be a dedication of two brand-new batting cages that have been privately funded by Reading Little League Baseball. And those, one will be a rededication to Ernie Mello and the other to recently deceased gentlemen from Little League. And so, it's going to be a great day. It's going to be a lot of fun. I don't actually think anybody can get mad about this. I think it's just going to be a good time, so that's all I got.
Just pray for sunshine and good weather.
Barry, if I could just ask a question. John, you said at some point this was done in the past. How long ago was this done?
I think that the last time this was done would have been in the, possibly in the late 50s, but maybe as short a time ago as the early 60s, but it's been over 50 years, I think, since it's...
A couple people come up to me and they remember doing it as a kid.
Yeah.
So, I had never heard of it, so you mentioned.
Yeah, it used to be a really big deal, and, you know, in a lot of other places, it is a big deal. I know I've been going year after year out to Hopton for my grand, my grandchildren all played either softball or baseball, and they also teamed up and did the same thing. It's a, it's not quite as big as yesterday in Hopton, but it's a big, it's a big deal, so...
And on a personal note, I greatly enjoyed the fact that for the first time we had someone come for DRT meeting and sign in as a clown.
On their own.
On their own. And readily admitted, that's what I do.
We, I wouldn't let him wear the nose in. We stuffed it at that.
It was highly organized.
Yeah, that's it for me.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I have passed out a letter that I'd like to take, had the board take a look at. This has to do with cable TV and a feature that's under discussion by the State Senate Ways and Means Committee. Kathleen O'Connor-Ives is the chair of that committee, and the Methuen Cable TV Group has written a letter in support of, what are the S, the S-designator here on the Senate, yeah, S dot 1857 Act, Supporting Community Access Television. If ratified, the bill would allow community media stations in Massachusetts access to both high-definition channel space and access to electronic programming guides, two items that are very high on our list in our negotiations. This would actually enshrine it in state law. It seems to be a low-cost, no-cost effort, you know, in terms of public funds that are going to be expended, so I'm having Bob circulate this to the full board, and I'm hoping we can take this up maybe at our May 1st meeting.
If we have a recommendation, maybe send it along to some of the listeners.
Well, I would go straight to the Ways and Means and copy. Apparently, this is up for a vote soon. Okay, and...
It's a Senate bill?
Yeah, right now. I think it would, yeah, only have to be passed by the House also. And funny that we have all our dispatchers here tonight. We could not have had a better or finer example of dispatch emergency response than I witnessed during the 11 o'clock mass at St. Agnes on Sunday. A woman apparently fainted. People were on the spot within five minutes. It was handled so delicately, taking the condition of the woman into account as well as what was going on inside the church. Turned out she was not in a serious situation, and everything went on normally. Service concluded, and it was just handled with such exquisite perfection, I thought, by everybody. So, big shout-out to you guys. You do it every time.
I think that's a regular day at the office for all of these people. I mean, honestly, much as chagrin of, you know, some people in town, these guys actually pulled me out of my house and saved me, so, you know, my wife and children thank you anyway, so...
That's it.
Okay. Just a couple of really quick FYIs. This Saturday, the Climate Advisory Committee is sponsoring Earth Day at Parker from 10, 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. The topic is hot and cool ideas for energy at home and on the go, and I know this year they're also going to have in the parking lot those cool electric cars, so that's always a fun item. Another thing I just kind of want to give a shot, kind of an FYI to, is in, on June 7th, actually UMass Boston, there'll be a screening of a movie called Intelligent Lies, which is an award-winning documentary, and it follows three developmentally-disabled adults as they kind of navigate trying to find jobs and get education. You know, in Reading, we, as you know, in general, so basically, the schools are responsible up to 21, but after 22, after that period of time, they're kind of on their own, and it's a patchwork of different services, you know, we deal a lot with that here in town. And there'll be a panel discussion of the actors, with the actors and also some of the participants in that movie, and I know a group of people from Reading are going to go to that, and they're also trying to bring the movie back here to Reading for a screening, so more on that. And then also just a shout-out to, yesterday obviously was a miserable day, but it didn't stop about 20,000 mentally insane people from running the Boston Marathon, and actually just want to give a shout-out to one of our own, Kate McNussa, who came in, I think 28th of the women from the entire, not just her age group, but the entire women.
25th.
Uh, 20, well, the paper says 28th. I don't know, Al, not Al. We won't let the facts get away.
Come on, it's a hometown thing, Al.
25th or 28th.
Rest of Massachusetts.
So, you know, good for her. A couple of other people, Paul Whitlam, who was the second person from Reading across the line.
Liz's...
Liz's husband, he came in 3900th overall, but the second person from Reading. The second local woman to finish was Deshanti Perera, and she was the 4100, 41st hundred woman to finish. Other finishes of note included local resident Holly Weinberg, running for Mass General Hospital Pediatric Cancer Team for a friend's daughter battling cancer, and Kate Spillane, a Killam School teacher who ran with Dana Farber Team for her student Kyle Koster. So, shout-out to all those people who ran, and also a shout-out to the people, I know there are many, many Reading residents who were handing out water, working the medical tents, volunteering, so it's a great event, and we were well-represented, so kudos to all those who ran and helped out. That's all I have, so want to open up a public comment? State your name.
Yes, George Catchum, Coleman Road, and a new town meeting member representing precinct aid alongside my neighbor, Bill Brown.
Oh, wow.
He's not new.
I know, he usually is, right?
You have 50 years to kind of catch up.
I know, I know. And I would start it in September. Yeah, I want to say thank you to a lot of people. Thanks to the police and fire departments, both chiefs were very helpful as I became educated, ever since I got invited by our town manager to get involved, and I want to thank John Howsey and Barry Berman in particular, who helped me during many stages of things, helped me on the video that I did, the five-minute video, both police and fire department helped on that. So, I want to say thanks to the residents, the 60% that came out and voted yes for Reading, to Aaron and Michelle, all the work they did, but also thanks to the 40% that came out and voted no. They expressed an opinion, and as Bob and I heard at the Pleasant Street Center, when Bob was answering questions about the override, there were two individuals that spoke very much no, on the no side, and I spent about an hour afterwards speaking to both of them, listening. And I think the listening is the key lesson that I think we all have to do better at. I think that the select board that came out with the survey, I think that was key, and what was even more key was the fact that you, the school department, the police and fire department, everyone listened, and I think that's key going forward. And if I take, who was it, Henrietta Marota, the lady, the senior at the final meeting before the vote, that came out and was talking about, you know, helping the seniors, that's the message I wanted to get forward to. I want to say that we've got to think more of what to do and help the seniors. They have a lot of value to Reading. There is a heritage there. I know there, you know, Reading has, what, is the third town in Massachusetts to do the senior tax relief. Maybe there's other things we can do so that those who are born and grow up here can spend the rest of their life here. So, how do we handle that? And how do we do all of that so they can come, become supporters? Because they're one of the greatest beneficiary of our public safety, which is outstanding. I mean, as was pointed out many times during the campaign, those 55 years of age and older take about 68% of public safety support, so they need to have the funds to do that, but they can't afford that. So, I think, and I'll be happy to help on that as we go forward on that. Another thing that she said at that meeting was introduce yourselves at meetings. And the other thing, which she, I think she said, and I forgot my hearing date tonight, is everyone needs to learn to speak louder and clearer, and I've said that individually to several people. Now, John and Barry have very loud voices, so that's, and so that's...
I didn't think you said that one.
So, so in wrapping up, I just want to say, you know, let's go forward, let's have a review in two to three years of where we are with respect to another override. We'll need another override in three to five years, so let's not go 13 years again. You know, let's have the appropriate reviews to go over those things. And key thing is listen to those that said no, and let's work on common issues, because they love Reading, we love Reading, and we'll work together with civility and not have some of the vitriolic letters to the editors that did exist. I mean, let's chill out, work together, because we have a wonderful town, love it dearly. Thank you.
Thanks, George. No, it's, I appreciate those kind words. We've always said that decisions are made by the people who show up, and on April 3rd, people showed up, and they voted their passions, and whenever you get into a situation where you're dealing with tax dollars and there are lots of people who are struggling to make ends meet, you're going to have things kind of get a little testy from time to time, but you're right, listening is the most important thing. Not just listening, but hearing is the most important thing. And, you know, there are legitimate reasons for people to vote yes and legitimate reasons for people to vote no, but whether you voted yes or you voted no, those services are your services, and, you know, your other point, I think, is well, you know, we've talked about it here on the board extensively, I think it's going to become an issue as we go forward more and more, is we do have an aging population in Reading. You know, the problem of people being able to age in place is not a Reading problem, it's not Massachusetts problem, it's probably a Northeast problem, right? Where you have, where you have escalating real estate values, younger people coming in demanding more services, folks who want to stay but on a fixed income. It is not a Reading problem, it's a, it's a, it's a national problem, but really a Northeast problem. And so, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to solve that problem locally. So, are there kind of projects that we can work on together that, you know, provide services? I mean, you know, town government is our volunteers. I mean, we'll, we'll figure things out hopefully as we go forward. The need is certainly there, but we are really glad that this override is in the rear-view mirror. You know, Bob and the superintendent are now going to have to hurry up and fill those positions to meet the expectations, but thank you again for your kind words, and, you know, the problem's not going to go away. We can now just, at least now the budget's stable, and we can work on some of these other longer-term problems, which is kind of, I know personally from my point of view, why I got involved in town government, not to run overrides every year. That's not a lot of fun, so thank you again. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. Bob, do you have a report?
Just a couple of quick things, just as a reminder in case anyone forgot, next Monday night is the start of town meeting. We had a pre-town meeting, we know we have at least two nights of town meeting, it's possible we'll end after two nights. Next Monday and next Thursday are the first two nights. Two longer-term events that you'll hear a little bit more as we get closer, but just to put them on calendars. Saturday, May 19th is more than just the royal wedding, it is also the Garden Club's plant sale.
Oh, is it the 19th?
It is the 19th.
Oh, I missed that one.
Come early, because the best plants are usually gone by 8 o'clock. And also, as I mentioned last Thursday, on Wednesday, May 23rd at 6 o'clock in the Scatini High School Library, there's a school security summit planned. This event is open to the public, it certainly will aim at school-age parents, school kids' parents. The chief, myself, and the superintendent will discuss as much as we can in public about building security. We had some questions over the last year or two from members of the public, and we realized we tend to dwell on all the things we can't talk about, but there really are a number of things we can review that we think everyone knows they may not. Just things like training that are done in common, drills that are done in the schools, just so everyone hears it and wants to talk. So, again, that'll be an important meeting on May 23rd at 6 o'clock. It's a little early because there is some open houses at the two middle schools later that night, so we want to get it in early. Thanks.
All right, moving on, proclamations, telecommunications week. So, we have a proclamation, and I don't know if the chiefs want to add anything to that, but Dan want to...
We'll do that first. Move to approve the following proclamation. Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which just passed. Whereas there are 11 public safety dispatches working for the town of Reading, and whereas our public safety dispatchers serve the citizens of Reading with dedication, loyalty, and pride, and whereas the citizens of Reading rely on public safety dispatchers as their vital link to our police, fire, and ambulance services, and whereas our public safety dispatchers connect our citizens to our public safety providers who may apprehend a criminal, who may save their possessions from fire, or whom may save their life or the life of a loved one, and whereas each year, the second week of April is dedicated to the people who serve as public safety telecommunications, and whereas in 1991, United States Congress proclaimed Public Safety Telecommunications Week as a nationally-recognized week. And whereas the week of April 8th through April 14th, 2018, has been proclaimed National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in recognition of the contributions of public safety dispatchers and other telecommunications nationwide. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Reading, do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through 14th, 2018, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Reading, and we urge all citizens to recognize the considerable contributions of our public safety dispatchers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Chief, do I want to vote on it first, or?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Here we go.
Opposed? Pass is 3-0. Chief, I know you have some kudos you want to hand out.
Absolutely, yeah. First of all, thank you very much, thank you for allowing us to talk tonight for National Telecommunications Week. Our dispatchers, our public safety dispatchers, if you'd like, you could agree, they're our unsung heroes behind the scenes 24 hours a day, answering every call that comes in for service here in the town of Reading. They may go unnoticed from a lot of people, but they're not unnoticed from us. They really do outstanding job for this town, and they are literally the ones who keep us safe in our cars and our fire trucks, and know when we need help and send help, and also keep everybody in town when 911 calls, safe as well. Did, come on, let me introduce a couple of people. Dispatcher, here's our supervisor dispatcher. And this is dispatcher Deb Haynes, dispatcher Nicole Janey. Nicole's been here about a year, Deb's been here about 11 years. We have a couple of combinations we gave out this year, two, one for the police, one for the fire. If you could just give a brief...
Sure, please.
Dispatchor Hayes, on the night of October 30th, she was working the midnight 8th, all by herself. She received, it was a heavy rain night with 7 mile per hour winds, she received over 50, 50-plus calls for service and had to dispatch police, fire, DPW, the light department, all, all by herself that night, and kept everything in motion at the same time, as well as later on that night, had to handle a serious medical aid call. So, again, we want, she did an outstanding job by herself that night, and really kept the town of Reading smooth as possible for everybody working in public safety and in the DPW and light department that night as well. Thank you very much for giving that.
I'd like to say thank you as well, and also recognize Nicole Janey. On March 8th, you may remember the snowstorm and the windstorm that came through Reading and knocked out power for a lot of people, and there was a busy night for dispatch, certainly. From 1:30 at night till 6:30 in the morning, Nicole handled over 450 phone calls and radio transmission.
Wow.
At the end of it, at the end of the shift, we had a fire, and it didn't come in just as normal as it normally would. It came down, it came in with wires down to a neighbor's property, and then Nicole got a phone call for a resident reporting that they're smoking things by their, by their pipes and electrical service. And it turned out it's a fire that we thought was in the house behind them. So, it wasn't a very easy fire, where we got to write a, write address for it, but Nicole was able to find out where it was and guide the fire fighters there, and also support the operation, all the while receiving phone call after phone call from the public reporting wires down and other emergencies. So, she had to support us, and she had to support the community, right down to a resident calling, asking to the school that day. So, I can't imagine what it was like being in that dispatch and when all that was going on. She called me at home to tell me of the fire, that we had a second-line fire, so I would respond there as well. And going there, I heard the other phone calls, I heard the fire going on, and she just did an outstanding job all the way through the fire, so congratulations and thankful for her.
I love you.
Just to inject one little piece, both, both dispatches, all my dispatches are absolutely amazing, I treasure them, and for the night that Nicole was managing the chaos, that she did so well. Ms. Haynes, who lives right down the street, hopped up, got in her car, came right into work and helped out. Nobody had to ask her to do that, she knew, she took care of things, so it was spot-on by both, and they both definitely deserved commendation and recognition tonight.
So, can I ask you a question? So, that was, that night was between what hours and what hours, Greg?
Of the, all those?
Yeah.
It went for the entire 24-hour shift, a lot of people, but it really peaked, 1:30 to 6:30, 450 phone calls and radio transmissions.
So, it's a lot of radio... So, that's more than one a minute?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I was listening to that, and I just said to myself, how do you do that? I, you know, I mean, that's really, that's something.
And it's not only just receiving, Nicole had to call other departments and have them respond, call the light department and ask them to respond, call, ask them to...
I know it's not just an answer, I know, I know you have to actually be doing something on the other. That's just an amazing, you know, worth more than a commendation.
You guys do it for...
Pot of gold, I hear.
Next year, maybe, yeah.
Reading's a busy place.
Yeah, you guys do a tremendous job, and we're grateful, and it's one of those things where, you know, you're, in some ways, you're like a referee in a basketball game or an umpire in a baseball game. Nobody really notices you until you do something wrong, or you miss something, right?
Maybe we can get them to come in and do our meetings.
Yeah, but when you guys, if you guys miss something, you know, there could be lives at stake, so I know the pressure is great, but, you know, speaking on behalf of the board and really for the entire town, we're incredibly grateful for the work that we did, so...
Thank you.
So, now, do we, do we want to, who gets this? Want to maybe take a photo, or?
Oh, we're going this way, okay.
Yeah, come on, we'll come up. Everybody.
We normally walk that way, but...
Right, come on, she's well.
Yes.
Bob, you want to come in? Chiefs, you want to?
Stand back here. Sounds like a handful.
Are you kidding me? I'm going to line this up.
I'm good, I'm right here. Get in here, guys.
Mark, not your back, your better side.
That was October 30th.
Yeah.
That was October 30th.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you do, I really appreciate it.
I'm not going in there. It's a dangerous place, it's full of oxygen. Oh, that's okay.
I didn't even notice.
So, moving on.
Okay, this is the...
Hearing for 467 Main Street.
Please take notice that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Reading will hold a public hearing on April 17th, 2018, at 8 o'clock PM in Selectmen's Meeting Room 16, Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, to approve the request on 467 Main Street regarding an entrance/exit waiver, outdoor dining license, and the addition of three parking spots on Main Street. Copy of the proposed document regarding this topic will be available in the Board of Selectmen packet made public on Thursday, April 12th, 2018, on the website at www.reddingma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 6:00 PM on April 17th, 2018 to Town Manager at ci.reddingma.us.
Empty seat right there.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you do, I really appreciate it.
I'm not going in there. It's dangerous, it's a full lock signal.
Oh, that's okay.
I didn't even notice.
So, moving on.
Hey, this is the...
Hearing for 467 Main Street.
Please take notice if the Board of Selectment of the Town of Redding will hold a public hearing on April 17th, 2018, at 8 o'clock PM in Selectmen's Meeting Room 16, Lowell Street, Redding, Massachusetts, to approve the request on 467 Main Street regarding an entrance/exit waiver, outdoor dining license, and the addition of three parking spots on Main Street. Copy of the proposed document regarding this topic will be available on the Board of Selectment packet made public on Thursday, April 12th, 2018, on the website at www.reddingma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 6:00 PM on April 17th, 2018, to townmanager@ci.reddingMA.us.
So, do we have the...
Just for the record, we received no public comment.
Is there anybody here from the public that just wanted to take a brief, okay. All right, so, gentlemen?
First of all, I'm Ray Bogos, developer, that's property of Sabo, architect. Apologize, Brian McBrayer, our legal counsel, that a conflict night, and could attend. But since we're to last time we're here, we're seeking three approvals from the Board of Selectment, one being the garage entrance is 43.7 feet from the intersection of Main and Green, and we're seeking approval from the Board of Selectmen to allow for the, I guess, a waiver to be within, under 50 feet from the intersection. The other thing we're looking for, permission for, is the outdoor seating located in the area right here.
You mean where the cars are up on the sidewalk?
Cars on sidewalk? Yes. We understand that without the, whoever infringes the space, if they choose to do outdoor seating there, they have to come back with a detailed seating plan. We fully understand that. We just wanted, the CBDC wanted to come here and get permission, I guess, in a general sense, contingent upon them coming back with a detailed plan you guys agree upon. And lastly, we're looking for approval for any, between zero and three parking spaces in front of the building right here. That's really subject to the Board of Selectmen and how they want to, they choose to approve it, how many spaces they like there. But we think safely you can fit three there. We've got traffic studies and traffic line studies, and we think that's, you know, a safe approach to go, but it's ultimately up to the Board of Selectmen.
So it's just a cutback on the sidewalk, is that what's going to go, because it's a wide, wide sidewalk?
So currently, right now, yes, there's two curb cuts right here, and they're very large.
Right.
And the sidewalk is, the largest point is 17 feet. So it's very large, we need, you know, eight and a half for a parking space. So we feel that you can, you can put these parking spaces here and still have the seven feet pathway for our residents to walk. So we feel like that's, you know, the safe amount of way, that's kind of the general standard, it's about seven feet, and we feel it's got to be safe, and it also offers three parking spaces, which, you know, that town is...
Is that a strip of landscaping between the sidewalk and the street that we're seeing there?
Those nice boards you guys put in downtown initially?
The brick favors that are in there.
You have the brick favors? So those are up here, and right now, they're, it stops here, there's a curb cut, starts here for a little bit, the curb cut.
You have the huge curb cut for the gas station.
Yes, yeah, there's two very large curbs.
Giant ones there.
So you're not losing anything?
Yeah, they're not your typical, you know, 22-foot curb cut, they're very large. So we'll close this one curb cut, continue the brick border, so it matches, and then take this existing curb cut and make the parking space up there.
So basically, those three spots are similar, kind of move to the left where they have, like in front of Professor's Market, they have those three kind of spots you can kind of pull up into.
That's the marker right here.
Yeah. So it kind of extends the downtown a little bit further out, which I think is a good, which I think is a good thing. Question about the outside table. So right now, obviously, you don't know what's going to go in there yet, right?
No, we don't, we don't know what retailers can take the spaces. We're just basically looking for, are you guys willing to approve outdoor seating here if a layout, if someone came to you with a layout?
Right. So you could be leasing it to somebody who doesn't, you know, who normally wouldn't have that, so it may or may not come before us, but you're just looking for some guidance?
Yeah, so we look to approve it, and the CBDC wasn't allowed to approve that, so they asked us to come to you guys and get that approved. So we just want to kind of check our boxes and make sure you guys will be open to something like this, or not.
And then I think, wouldn't whoever goes in there, if they actually wanted to do it, do they have to come back?
Yes, that's what it would be. Come out.
Yeah, I think we have a directive that staff can handle that, so that people aren't tied up, they're not going to come back to the board.
Gene will handle that. The less is complicated.
Yeah, if it's...
I think we only have one in town right now.
We only have one.
One outside?
Yeah.
What one is that?
Uh, D M E T's.
We had three at one point, but we're not.
Four of them's gone.
Yeah, D M E T's is like two, really.
But, you know, in the nice weather, it gets used all the time, it's great, you know, people really like it.
Actually, you have the greens, the green tomato.
It's on private property.
That sidewalk is private property?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
A part of it, yeah, up close to the valley.
I actually think that's a nice amenity to the, should a, you know, restaurant go in there, I think it's a nice amenity.
I think so, I mean, people love outdoor seating. It's such a short season that you try to, you know, try to grab as much as you can.
Anybody comes in here and gives us parking places, it's a nice idea to have, too.
Gene, PTF had no objection to the 46-foot waiver? Yeah, I see no issue with that. We talked that through last time.
It's a correction, our original... Yeah, it's 43.7, we said last time.
And now, when you come out of Green Street, you can't make that left-hand turn, right?
No, or well, is that in place now?
Is the sign up?
It's been up for a while, but people are...
Still doing it.
Needing to get used to it. They haven't gotten used to it yet.
Gene, if we approve the three parking spots, there's nothing that we have to make a decision now about, are they half-hour spots, one-hour spots, two-hour, I mean...
I would say they would default to two hours if you don't do anything different. That's what the downtown default is.
And then we can maybe change that, depending on the usage of that.
Well, I think, yeah, it depends, like, so for example, the ones in front of the Quick Stop and Professor Market are 30 minutes, for good reason. You know, you want people coming in. And if that kind of business is there, then I'm guessing they'd probably petition for that.
So we don't have to decide what?
I don't think so.
Now, right? We can just, okay, we can figure that out before.
And the parking spaces, the motion says up to three, do we want to stipulate three precisely, or do we want to leave it up to three?
Well, I mean, if three fit, I'd like three.
So, yeah, while we're here, is, that was another kind of, you know, loose point, was our CBDC, how many of you guys feel you want in there? Like I said, it could be one space, it could be two, it could be three, materially ultimately up to you guys.
So three spaces, like with a normal car?
Yes, I think they're 24, 26.
You would not be in the intention to use that as a loading zone, or not unload?
No, no, no.
So you have the loading on the property?
It's under the, inside the garage.
Okay. Any comment, George?
Yeah, sorry, I missed the very beginning, but I'm a little bit confused. The blue represents the retail space. It's not very deep, it's like a car length deep, right?
Down here is narrow, up here is about 20 feet.
So how many retail spaces are you expecting in there? And where are the living spaces up above?
See the yellow? See this yellow shading? Goes in and all the way to front area?
Okay.
So that's the building above.
And how many stories is it, two or three above?
Three above. With the setback on the fourth floor.
So how many retail spaces do you expect in the blue area?
We think it's going to be between one and two, depends on the retail...
As I remember, it's 2,500 square feet?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, you could, I would say two would probably be max, you know.
I don't think it's very good.
And then my guess is that the right person goes in there, they're going to want the whole space.
That's what I'm hoping for, like, it's our seating area or something along the line, or UPS store, or, you know, something that can handle a narrower space, and then up here can handle a lot more.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
David, can 38th Street? Just a question regarding the clearance between that outdoor seating table on the bridge one to the right and the edge of that parking space, closest parking space. Do you have a clearance there?
It's about five feet.
Oh, five feet?
Yeah.
That means all over the park?
Yeah, probably more than five feet, I think exactly what the table is.
And like we said, whoever comes here would have to come back with a detailed seating plan, so if they feel like that's too tight, you know, maybe it's two tables, or maybe it's a table here, and maybe, you know, it's, that's really off the mark, off to the tenant will be in there, and all the big towns. You have minimums that you can get. Yes, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Do you want to close the hearing?
Move to, the Board of Selectmen, close the hearing on 467 Main Street.
I saw you.
You're too sick.
I'll do that.
All those in favor? Posed, various closed.
Yeah, I'll do these as one motion, and correct me if I'm getting any of these numbers wrong. Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the entrance/exit location to the project on Green Street at 46.3 feet?
43.7.
Feet from Main Street intersection as required by the decision. So that would be with a 6.3-foot deviation from the desired 50 feet, correct? And move that the Board of Selectmen grant permission for the project to have outdoor seating on the sidewalk at the street level of the commercial space, conditioned upon any further tenants or occupants applying for and obtaining an outdoor dining license pursuant to the Board of Selectmen policy section 3.10. And move that the Board of Selectmen approve the project at Bogos' expense to create three on-street parking spaces, which will be fully public and regulated as the town of Redding sees fit. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, passes 3-0. Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
When are we going to see a shovel in the ground?
We're hoping in August. We've developed plans right now, we'll open in August, get a little bit of cleanup, and then...
Great, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Next up is change of DBA for the Art Lounge.
Thanks, Gene.
Is there anybody here from here?
No.
Do they need to be?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
She's just dropping the "the" on the Art Lounge on Haven.
That's pretty routine.
She just wanted to make it.
No hearing.
Because I guess on her business certificate doesn't have the "the," she just wanted to make it up.
So she's not really changing the structure?
She went from an LLC to a sole proprietor.
And Bob, do we care about that at all? I don't think so.
It's not probably seen it.
Okay.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the change of DBA and corporate structure with the wine and malt general on-premise license for the Art Lounge on Haven, located in 78 Haven Street, Redding, Mass.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, net, zero?
Well, I'll take your word, we did the minutes. No, we did three.
So we did three of them, and then March 27?
Is that actually?
They're not in here.
Oh, all right, so we'll wait on that.
Okay, so, I think we're...
There we go.